For the supervisors, we'll come into session. The flag's lit. Supervisor Valzuela.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with the great and just as for all.
Do you have some other information?
Let us pray. Our Heavenly Father, our Creator, we thank you for this team of leaders and public servants who have offered themselves to serve the people of our county. Father, we ask that you would bless them, that you would inspire them, that you would give them wisdom that they need, and lead us all in Jesus' name. Amen.
Okay. We roll call real quick. Supervisor, how?
Present.
Supervisor Valzuela.
Okay.
Supervisor. Present. Supervisor, okay. Present. And Supervisor.
Here.
And just real quick, the board will be convening today. It looks like as the leaders of flood control, water conservation district, and county service area four, and receives an additional conversation.
Okay, so with that, I think we're at, well, and welcome. I guess we should just start off with a welcome. Is that okay?
That's okay.
To the new room, I hope you can all hear us. Sounds like these are being pushed back a little bit, but that's very good because we have too many complaints in the past. So with that, we're at item four, department request, county clerk. Good morning.
Good morning. I'm before you today to administer the oath of office to Supervisor District One, Jess Harris, Supervisor District Two, Ed Valenzuela, and Supervisor District Four, Nancy Oren. If you'd step forward.
Do you want Ray and I on the?
Yes, please.
Thank you. You're going down there.
If you could raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear or affirm that you will support and defend the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California against all enemies, foreign and domestic, that you will bear true faith and allegiance to the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California, that you take this obligation freely without any mental reservation or purpose of occasion, and that you will well and faithfully discharge the duties upon which you are about to enter?
I do.
I do. Thank you.
And it?
That's it.
You have your chair.
Yeah, I know.
You're different, yeah. All right, so we are, um, welcome Supervisor Harris. We're at item five, Board Supervisor to Quest. Election of the A1 is election of the Chair and the Vice Chair for 2025. We nominate Supervisor Oren for Chair and Supervisor, how, for Vice Chair?
House Snooker.
All righty. Supervisor, how?
Aye.
Supervisor Valenzuela.
Yep.
Supervisor Harris. Supervisor Oren.
Aye.
And Supervisor Kopser.
I'm gonna do item two, and then we'll take a break here for a quick and do the shuffle. Item five, A2, we need to authorize or grant county officials permission to leave the State of California and the United States during 2025. That's a normal thing. It's just a protocol, basically, so that you don't think we're flying the coop.
I'll make the motion.
I have a motion.
One second. All right. Supervisor, how?
Aye.
Supervisor Valenzuela.
Yep.
Supervisor Harris.
Aye.
Supervisor Oren.
Aye.
And Supervisor Kopser.
Aye.
Okay, with that, we're gonna take a five-minute break so we can shuffle around here. Well. You don't need to be close.
I hate to use the camel.
Go back in session. Welcome, everybody. This is a pleasure for me to get to do this, so bear with me. We're gonna move on to item six, presentations from the public. This time slot is for the information from the public. No action or discussion will be conducted on matters presented at this time. You will be allowed three minutes for your presentation. Written comments can be presented, if so desired, by providing a minimum of seven copies to the clerk. When addressing the board, please state your name for the record prior to providing your comments, and if you don't do that, we'll remind you. Please address the board as a whole through the chair. Comments should be limited to matters within the jurisdiction of the board. I have one blue card from Angela Davis, CAO.
Good morning, Chair Oren, members of the board. Angela Davis, county administrator. Before you today, I would like to present to some and introduce to others Mr. Jeff Collins, if you'd like to come forward, please, Mr. Collins. He is the newly appointed Director of Information Technology, and as you are aware, we are now direct service with our IT department, is in-house with county employees, and we are overjoyed at the job that they're doing and extremely excited of what the future holds. So I wanted to introduce to you Mr. Jeff Collins. Sit by me. Words.
Nice to meet all of you today, and nice to be here at the county, doing a lot of work, and hopefully improving the technology we have here, and making more efficient and working better for all of employees and the public.
Good morning.
Welcome. Good morning.
Any questions on anything?
I believe we've met before. You know my only concern is cybersecurity.
Yeah, it's an ongoing concern. Obviously, it's a big task to address that, working on a daily basis to make sure we're secure and protected, as you see in the news every day almost. Companies of all sizes or just smaller are being hit by ransomware attacks, so doing everything we can to prevent that and keep up and coming here.
I'm the Vice Chair of the Information Technology Committee for the National Association of Counties, and there is a meeting that doesn't go by where cybersecurity is not mentioned.
Oh, yeah, it's a huge risk. Like I say, it's all these threat hackers from different countries and different places, and mostly it's ransomware today. As you've seen, multi-billion dollar companies being hit with that, massive security budgets, and they're not gonna do it either, so it's a lot of work and preparation, and it's a constant job to make sure that we're secure.
Just note that I'll be constant contact with you, just to know where we are at any moment in time. Thank you. Thank you. Welcome.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Thank you, board.
Thank you. Moving on to consent agenda, item seven.
Second.
I'm sorry, who was the motion? Thank you. And nothing was pulled, correct? All righty. Supervisor Valenzuela.
Yep.
Supervisor, how?
Aye.
Supervisor Harris.
Aye.
Supervisor Kopser.
Aye.
Supervisor Oren.
Aye. Moving on to departmental requests, this is item eight. Item A, Community Development. Presentation of 2024 year-end updates for the Community Development Department, including planning, environmental health, and building divisions. Mr. Dean.
Good morning. Wow. Stand normal.
You can stand normal. You can just, you can stand normal.
Back away from the mic.
Someone intimidating. Man, you have the first number one out. Case one, please. Rick Dean, Community Development Director. Been quite a year, I'll say that, for all of us, I think. First place has been the most challenging year for me and our department since my career at the county. Before I jump into a little review on our financial situation, I'd like to speak about community development in general, and just the pride I have with the team and the family that we have there, and I think you can share that pride also. You know, it's really been a challenging year, not so much, you know, we got the dam removals going on, people can't disqualify, fire cleanups, water wars, et cetera, et cetera. All those things, it's just shoot yourself in the foot, get up, suck it up, do the work done, you know. And before, this year, just the personal overlap that we had with, you know, our personal lives and our work life. Right out the gate, January, enforcement out in the burb to get the floor, cardiac arrest, our family, staff led by Andrea Fox jumped on him, did CPR for three minutes, brought him back to life, and the whole timeframe with him dealing with that, obviously had an issue with his heart, right? So it wasn't until May that we actually got him attention and had that dealt with. Very impressed. Lisa Flag is a heart, she's our office manager, made sure that everything's attended to. John's house was clean, he had food. We went to his house on three events where he gets unconscious, got him to the hospital, advocated for him to get some medical services that he needed. Very grateful he's here today. That was just one of the challenges we had. February, a little cocktail, fireball goes into the basement of a building, damaged 50,000 records of our building records, it's made it more difficult for us to operate. Staff has been cramped in space for almost a year now, getting to know each other quite well, so to speak. Basically, we had three or four people per office, carrying on, very, very proud of the team, very little whining going on, basically second, giving it them, performing what we do. Our building staff, basically picking tables in the front lobby, just business as usual, carrying on and doing the job now, of course. With that, good things come out of that. Rick Florindo's taking the opportunity to mentor three of our staff, getting through the RHS exam, so this year, Coleman Fitzgerald, Sam Vanilla, and also Salem Dewey have all passed their RHS exams, are in force, and we have plenty of many staff to do that goal now, so that's been a benefit, yet have not innings right there, shoulder to shoulder to communicate, so hats off to Rick for that. Jenny Roach, our office, cancer situation, bowled for quite a time, very proud of the staff, stepped up, got her, you know, league time that she desperately needed, solved the need right at the gate, and again, Lisa Flag, at the helm, making sure that she had the checks on, had food, so forth. Just, all in all, very proud of our team for what they do internally, Flag and so forth. Crazy things go on, continue, right? One of our inspectors was hit by a dog, a walk. We do the rig program, of course, right? So we're waiting for a bike party to come, but just wanted to see what we get. Now, Andrea Fox, class waiting, fell broke her ankle, so, anyway. Life is life, and life goes on, it overlaps with all the things we have, so just wanna wrap that up, and I think, you know, I'm very proud of the character and perseverance of our team that we have, and I think you can be proud of them as well. Now, we can move on to the financial business that we have. I'll go to the next slide, please. I'm not gonna get into a whole lot of detail with this, but I'm gonna go through each of our divisions, give you a picture financially where we're at. This first slide is basically over six years' time period of revenue versus expenses that we have. Next slide, please. This is all basically relative to the general fund, right? So you're where we're at, where we are at. Both the Building Division and also the Planning Division are subsidized, so to speak, by the general fund. And currently with building, it's 35% subsidized. Fees take care of the remaining 65%. Just wanna throw out there, we're challenged, we've come up with an additional 5% reduction in our budgets due to constraints that we have county-wide. In the case of the Building Department, as you know, it's been kind of a battle getting to where we are currently with service of the power, right? So we did not want to back off on staff, right? We just walked it back to a point where now, thanks to CEO's investment two years ago, and the boards, we are fully 100% caught up, and if you come into our department with a complete set of plans, you know, two weeks out the door. So thank you very much for that, that's been a deal for us internally, but also for the public we serve. So what we did to accomplish that 5% is we unfroze the ICC apartment portion of this fee structure, and built that up, and, including shots, if you can, whatever you have more, if you have any questions. Moving on to environmental health. Next slide, please. Environmental health is not part of the general fund, funded by fees and also realignment dollars. Basic graph at your disposal, you can have that for reference, right? Again, expense and service revenues. Next slide, please. This is basically the last six years as far as contribution of the equitirization funds that come in through the alignment to go to our department. So in general, right now, I would just say that environmental health, our budget is sound, primarily because we haven't been able to fully staff our team. Pre-2008, 1993, when I started here, we had a staff of 10, mine staff plus the director. Currently, we're in five staff and a director with twice the workload. Environmental health is most impacted by unfunded mandates from the state by far, and without exaggeration, we're doing twice the work that we did prior to 2008 with nearly half the staff. So this is one area that we definitely need to get short of. Okay? Next slide, please. And this is a reference here again, so this is not, again, type of general fund, it is fee coverage versus realignment, up with, you can see the graphs. Okay? Planning division. Planning is most affected by the general fund. Again, you can see the numbers there, graph, basically. Next slide, please. It has been a reduction in percentage of the general fund contribution, and basically to meet the goals with a 5% reduction, we eliminated the CTBG program manager position to accomplish that. So I'll just say that, you know, I'm proud of the board, and this is all to your decision and discretion and direction, but fees for planning have not been fully addressed since 2011, and I know we had conversations about regression at once at the campaign on DCS, so we can maybe take a look at that and if you're actually moving forward, but the percentage hasn't been reduced by 7% over last year, so that's where we're at, basically, with the financial picture of community development. Following, we will have presentation from planning and the building and then environmental health to, more details in the divisions. Put your hands out, though. Please, for Mr. Schoppen's presentation. My identity is Haley Lane with the planning.
Hi, good morning. Thank you, Planning Director Haley Lane. Next slide. So as the planning director, I oversee two divisions, the planning division and the code enforcement divisions, and so currently on staff, we have two senior planners, an associate planner, a planning permit technician, and a planning commission secretary. On the code enforcement side, we have a code enforcement supervisor, two code enforcement officers, and a code enforcement analyst currently. Next slide. For the planning divisions, you can think of the main duties being either current planning or long-range planning activities, and so current planning activities that we conduct, you know, include development projects on type of property, right? Use permit, zone changes, boundary line adjustments, Wellington Act, you know, those types of projects would be current planning. Our long-range planning activities include update to things such as the general plan, zoning ordinances, and other, you know, internal programs and policies to help the development, you know, within the long game of this county. Next slide. In 2024, we received 89 applications. This is somewhat a little bit less than in the past, we normally were averaging at about 100, but I would say staff right now is working on more complex projects that are taking a little bit more time to get out. For example, you know, SEQA environmental concerns that staff is working on, or journaling down project descriptions with the applicants, or, you know, dealing with some other project issues related to that. As, you know, commonly in the past, most of our applications are related to boundary line adjustments, add preserves, considering we've been focusing on that, you know, program and use permits. Next slide. Code enforcement. So our code enforcement team is always super busy, they always handle a lot of cases, and so just to summarize, there were seven land use cases, 31 planning cases, 241 building cases, 12 hazardous waste cases, and 165 campus cases. Next slide. There were a lot of big projects that we worked on, one of them being the evocation rental ordinance update. I know at the board level, we met a lot going over that, and so that is something that we completed in 2024. We also adopted the housing elements, that was a long planning process that we got done. We continued working on the 2050 general plan update, so that's scheduled to be completely adopted in 2026, and then we began working with JH Ranch and their plan development project, so that's in the queue and something you guys will be seeing in the future. Next slide. Wellington Act, so we have 445 total contracts within the county, 70 are multi-owner contracts, and a total of 414,000 acres are under contract. There were 13 contracts amendments totaling out about $15,275 in fees. 19 were processed and approved, two are currently on hold with issues, they need boundary line adjustments, and two are still in process. 8,853 acres were issued a notice of non-renewal, and 230 acres were added into existing contracts. Next slide. So our SMRA program, our Surface and Mining Reclamation Act mining program, also a really comprehensive program within our division. We currently have 25 mine sites, one was abandoned and required county closure, two are in process of reclamation, three new sites are in process, and there are three proposed amendments or expansions that we are currently working on, and the annual fees billed is about $35,000. Next slide. Well, we have one more slide left, so I will just summarize that briefly, and so I was gonna discuss what our 2025, you know, focuses are this year. There it is. As I mentioned, the JH Ranch plan development, we're working on that with the applicants, and so I'm hoping to take that to, actually, the planning commission in February or March. Still working on the general plan update, and I'm gonna continue staff training, and I will be studying for the AICP certification, so planner certification, so need many years of experience and education to get that done, so I'm finally ready for that in half some time. And then last, we're going to be working on updating required ordinances specifically for our housing element implementation. We have a slew of things that were mandated to update within our zoning code related to housing, so you'll be seeing a package of that, you know, in the next few months for adoption, so other than that, I'm happy to take any questions.
Yes. Through the chair, thank you. With regard to the SMRA program and permitting, it looks like it's $1,400 a year. Have we gone up from, were we lower than that? I know we started out high, and we were able to bring it back, but is it creeping up again?
It's not creeping up again. Rick and I were actually looking at this the other day, and it seems like in 2016, we had a fee schedule update specific to SMRA amendments.
Yes.
At the 1,400, so that's what we're currently working with, but we have no intention, right now at least, to increase those fees, so.
Thank you. So the Wellington Act, I know that's our longer process, but I thought we could take that along before you get to status.
You know, Brian Edson's done an amazing job, obviously focusing on this. Considering we have, you know, 70 multi-owner contracts, and that we survey every other year, I would assume maybe the next, probably three or four years, is, you know, you'd see a huge decrease in that multi-owner contract, because that's kind of when we get the information, right, is with the voluntary surveys, so we can start working with folks and contacting folks, and that's how we've been managing the program. Unless, of course, there was like a code enforcement violation, or someone calls, or there's concerns, or they're working on another development project, then we'll kind of handle the Wellington Act issues with that, but that's, that's what I foresee, is that being, you know, kind of drilled down.
So we had some, we, non-compliance and those kinds of things, are we able to qualify with that, is gonna do, because that would be an increase? So that one slide with the acreage, that tells.
Yeah. So, let's see here.
Maybe 800 acres, that's gonna be?
Yeah, so, you know, just north of 8,000, almost 9,000, were issued non-renewals, right? So that's a long process as well, right? It's a nine-year process, so folks have, you know, nine years either to go back and come back into the program, or after that, with the incremental taxes that occur over the nine years, is that's when it would be back in, you know, kind of general.
But we don't, we don't, we're not able to quantify that at this time, I mean, that's probably into the annus arduum.
Yeah, yeah, right, and we have to work with the assessor's office, and we totally forget you that number, but yeah, that's not something I have.
I don't think it's relevant, I think it's really making sure people are compliant, from my perspective.
Yeah, of course.
Can you give me some sense of timing of the transfer process?
Yes, so they submitted a plan development, so that's a, because they have a, you know, plan development zoning, and so how it works is they have to do a zone change in addition with a use permit, similar to Mount Shasta, how that kind of function worked, because it's a large project and there's multiple different activities occurring, that's why those both tandem applications are being processed. I've been, obviously, working on the project and working with, you know, Kip and Rog from JH, and so I'm planning to take it to planning commission, I'm hoping for February, if not March, and so depending on how that goes with approvals and things like that, then, you know, the board would see it shortly thereafter. I will say, the intent of these applications is to bring the property into compliance, there's nothing being expanded, no new occupancy, so it's really just to create baseline of what's been occurring, to formalize that, so we are able to work with them on potential expansion in the future.
What SEQA process are we looking at?
So for this, because it's baseline, we're looking at a categorical exemption, so, because there's nothing new being proposed, it's just, you know, a compliance thing.
Okay. Question?
Super, raise your hands. Can you give us a quick update on the general plan? How's that moving along?
Yeah, so it's moving along just fine, as you are all involved in the joint meeting regarding the vision and guiding principles, we took that back as staff, and, you know, took that input and feedback, brought that forward through the internal tag for the revised guiding, that vision and guiding principles. That's gonna be discussed at the January planning commission meeting this month, and then that recommendation will be moving forward to the board in February, and then after that, the next kind of main focus would be zoning code updates and the actual preparation of the elements, and so, you know, after the vision and guiding principles approval, which is slated And so, you know, after the vision and guiding principles approval, which is slated to happen, occur in February, that would kind of be the next step.
Is there more public outreach going to happen with that? Are there more public meetings?
Yes, there definitely is going to be more public meetings. We have nothing scheduled yet, but also during this process, we're going to be beginning the notice of preparation process for the EIR, so that's very, very involved with public. And so, that's probably what we'll see next in terms of, you know, scheduled public hearings and public meetings to get the public's input on that piece. Thank you.
Anything else for the morning?
Good morning, Board and Chair O'Grant. I'm Glenn Shockensey, Deputy Director of Building, here to provide my yearly update on the Building Department. Next slide, please. Currently, Building Department has five full-time employees, Deputy Director of Building, Building Plans Examiner, Building Inspectors three and two, Building Inspector two, all of which are ICC certified inspectors. We have one extra help retiree that fills in the gaps on some specialized projects that we have, and we are currently engaged in retaining this established staff so that we can continue to provide this service to the county. Next slide, please. Just go over briefly, this is the department task, planning, view and approval of current code compliance, permit issuance of reviewed projects, inspection of permitted construction projects throughout the county, answer code and permitting-related questions to the public, provide technical input on various high-profile issues throughout the county, which include ongoing fire rebuild efforts, dam removal project, which is thankfully winding down, we're mostly dealing with rez, assist code enforcement. Haley brought up how many building code enforcements they have. We assist them with those, send our inspectors out and get input on that, and assist, like I said, planning with onsite inspections of their building code issues. Next slide, please. This is year over year of how many fees we've collected in the Building Department. I just want to point out that that first one, it doesn't really represent, it's only a $49,000 difference between last year and this year, which I remember Supervisor Cobb stuff had asked me to look into my crystal ball and foresee what we were going to do in the Building Department during that trying year, but I'm happy to say it's only a $49,000 difference. Permits issued, we are actually, or the valuation, it is $23,583,000 compared to last year, which was $27,47,000, mostly because last year we had a lot of commercial projects. I think here we're Fish Hattery, SPI, just to name a few, so we didn't have that shot in the arm this year. Permit issued this year was 542 compared to last year of 331, so we actually issued more permits, and the inspections on that are lagging, so that's where that stands. Next slide, please. Building inspections, year over year, 2024, we did 3,421, 2023 was 3,231, and '22 was 2,878 inspections, so we continue to climb yearly. Next slide, please. This is just a quick slide to show today, the permit fees that Building has waived due to the fires in the county. That's strictly the amount of permits, it doesn't, it doesn't represent, you know, time to drive down to the different sites or the vehicles and gas that are associated with that, so that's clearly a dollar count of permits waived. Next slide, please. So, as what, as usual in planning, I mean, building, we have permits that are ready to be issued that haven't picked up. So, again, I'm showing this slide to say, there's 44 that are ready to be issued, haven't been picked up by permities. Permit value is approximately $41,000 and valuation is close to $3,000. Next slide, please. And we're going to go through some permitting totals. Single-family dwellings, 58 submitted, 30 issued, and 30 have been final. Residential alterations, 304 total, 107 things submitted, 107 issued, 80 final. Next slide, please. I think we skipped one. Accessory buildings, 178 total, 67 submitted, 65 issued, 46 final. Commercial, 86 total, 50 submitted, 19 issued, and 17 final. Next slide, please. Electrical service, 131 submitted, 105 issued, and 84 final. ADUs, million conversions, total of eight, four submitted, three issued, one final. And down at the bottom is where I've listed projects that their permits expired, but we issued permits to complete based on the permity providing a letter of the consequences surrounding their expired permits. So, in that, we've issued 27 that kept going. Next slide, please. Rick mentioned we have ongoing challenges with being displaced because of arson, final fire. Trying to locate old documents to allow people to complete their permits has become a challenge, and working around our piles of plans and permits everywhere is a daily challenge. And ongoing wildfires, which we're hoping to catch up on a lot of that, get people back into their homes. Next slide, please. Goals for 2025, continue to maintain the current qualified staffing levels that we have, so that we can service the county in a timely fashion, maintain average permit plan check review times. Currently, we're two weeks. So, if everything is in order and everything's submitted, it goes through the proper steps of planning and, you know, fire everybody that looks at it, it's two weeks to get it out the door. And ongoing implementation, we're counting pre-approved plans. Next slide, please. Which this is an example of. This is going to be the first one of the county pre-approved plans that we finalize. Okay. This is out in Scott Valley, I believe, right?
Correct, yes.
Kind of proud that one's built. Other ones are in various stages of completion, but this one will be finalized shortly. And that concludes my presentation. Anybody have any questions?
Through the chair. So, a while back, I know when you say if everything's in order, it's a two-week turnaround for permitting. What's the lag time between, I guess, when someone first brings in a permit that may not have everything? Is there a lag time there that keeps that two-week window from happening? Are you with me?
Generally, there isn't. We get it in, goes through planning, we triage it, a couple of us look at it and say, let's fast-track this one forward, it looks like everything's here, we can get this one out the door, they have everything needed. And then, we'll let people know during the process, and if we get us upgraded trust caps or whatever, so we're constantly trying to move the project along as much as possible.
So, if someone provides a project and puts an application in for permit, can it get, new regulations come each year, does the person in 2020 that may, I'm just going to use that as a number, but that has submitted an application that may still be in route because of not having X, Y, or Z, do they get stuck with the new regulations from 2024?
Remember the permit they submitted under.
Okay.
Yeah, we don't take it, and they went on, it just goes, whatever permit was in effect when they submitted the project, that's what we got by.
Okay, thank you.
Supervisor help?
Maybe just a projection going forward, I think last time I spoke with Rick Dean, the Slater building at kind of crest of, maybe on the back, the backside of the number of submissions from that, where are we with McCann going forward? We anticipate a big swell again, or?
I haven't seen a lot submitted on McCann, so I'm not sure what the situation is there when people get permits and what they're waiting for in it.
I know Slater, there was a two-year lag time with the insurance.
Right.
Yeah, trying to determine what, what, what going forward is going to be and.
But as usual.
How it affect the permit time.
As usual, with all the fires, we expedite the fire projects, so we put them at the front of the line and try to get them back into their residence as soon as possible.
Yeah, I appreciate that. I also deserve to come and connect this.
Well, just go, two weeks seems pretty darn good.
It is.
As long as I've been, I've never seen what's caused it, I don't think that's, we've ever been that way. So, kudos to you on that.
Thank you. And all of you for your support in that, getting that done.
How many inspectors do you have out actually inspecting projects?
We have three, three that are your full-time inspectors, and then the rest of us can fill in as needed. So, I was out there before, I used to do it, our plan checker, so all of us can go out and do it as needed.
And what's the timeframe on an inspection when a property owner, project owner calls and says they're ready for an inspection? Are there cycles that you go out on and?
So, it's based on the days. We have routes that we do, so certain routes are on Monday, Wednesday, and Thursday, or Monday, Wednesday, Friday, other ones are Tuesday, Thursday. And if they call in their inspection by 7:00, we get to it, 7:00 AM, we get to it that day.
So, there's really no lag time.
There is no lag time there, yeah.
Great, well, we all appreciate the work that you've done to make sure this has progressed over the last few years. We know that there's been some issues, and we really appreciate the work that your department's put into fixing that.
Thank you. Thank you.
All right, if there's a window, Rick's coming back.
Mr. West has a previous commitment to be able to be here to represent environmental health, so I am filling in for that. Just to back up before I proceed, supervisor house question, Slater fire and so forth. Long process, you know, it's been over four years now, and there's been 43 homes rebuilt out of 265 lost. Not great numbers. That's it, McCann, you've had three, you know. Settlements are starting to come in, McCann's fire in the house, so expect we can get it out to there, but McCann rebuilt too, so. Yeah, long time to heal from these fires. Okay, environmental health, kind of touched on this earlier, with the staffing levels, really, environmental health has hit the hardest again from unfunded mandates and so forth that have worked, but then our staffing levels are 65%, what they were historically. Needs to be fixed. Let's say that. Next slide, please. Most of y'all know what we do, this is a list here. I don't, last year spent too much time in the hack-in, so I'm not going to get too carried away with it. If you have any questions on what we do, we're here to answer those for you. Next slide, please. Consumer protection, has done a bit of a job this year. Last year, we had 820 inspections conducted, this year 1,163. We have 371 food facilities, restaurants, that is, 161 temporary food permits, those are folks that go out and do portion of advancement, et cetera, et cetera. CFO, Scottish Food Operations, we have 39 of those that we inspect, 53 advanced, that's probably the largest thing that's grown over the years within our county are the advances we have. And we try to get more attention on them. Obviously, there's large populations that serve at those, there's a higher potential for things to go wrong, and staff has done a good job picking that up and actually committed to going out there on weekends and doing inspections and trying to make sure that we're good standing with those. Pools and spas, 47, private garden, and we also do a voice inspection and so forth. Next slide, please. CUPA program, what does that stand for? Certified Unified Program Agency, makes absolutely no sense, doesn't say exactly what it is at all, I'm being clear, another acronym developed by the state of California, thank you very much. Within the Waste Management Unit Program, couple of landfills, emergency response, fire cleanups, and scaldation, et cetera. I want to give a little shout out to Shannon Van Nella this year. We were tasked with cleaning up the head fire, which was a learning experience for certain. This is the first fire that the state basically put on owners of the county to fulfill. And it'd be nice to say it was all great and everything, still very expensive to do because we're within parameters of the state in order to get reimbursed by the state, so we still have to use the same 210-page contracts and so forth to get folks on board to do the work. Big learning occurred there for myself and team to try to work through those contracts. And thank you very much for helping us through that, Angela Davis, because did not meet the timeframe that I expected things to happen with. Once we did get everything in line, it went pretty darn well. And Shannon did a fantastic job dealing with the personalities on the ground. I'll say that, it's always a challenge, we have folks that are in a decimated situation and we're trying to work through this process with them, so. Next slide, please. Currently, we have 500 CUPA facilities. This is one area that has grown significantly within the county. When I was a manager of ASMAT, we had, you know, 1,400. A lot of this is due to cell sites coming in all over the place, right, associated with hazards, battery backup, power backup, propane tanks, et cetera, so that's increased our inspection by quite a bit there. 25 emergency responses this year. Keep knocking on wood, we haven't had any big events, right? Most of these have been diesel spills, trucks, you know, these things have been easily managed. Just keep the fingers crossed there, surprise you, and hopefully we'll stay on that track. It's been interesting, I think, to make the change with the driving hours, folks that are on the big rigs, you know, they can go over eight hours, have a couple, go to sleep, so there's a lot of this risk there as far as accidents go, and we're cognizant with what materials are handling, so just in the last 20 years, been a huge improvement and reduction in our need to respond to those accidents and events. Head fire cleanup, we have about 350 hours committed to that this year, cannabis support with pesticides and so forth, the circus department, code enforcement, 150 hours committed to that. Next slide, please. Land use, obviously on some septic wells, water systems. That slide button again, please. Little recap on what was done out there, had 104 versus 136 last year as far as set the permits goes. Welcoming, 119 versus 98 last year, you know, the varieties are up there, domestic wells, act wells, public wells, monitoring, et cetera. We have 40 new water systems that we sample quarterly, and just a heads up, there's a move at the state goal to take those. And just a heads up, there's a move at the state level to take those back and put them under the state per group, which currently our fees are about $275 per year. And what I'm seeing on the state level would be more like $1,500 or so.
Why is the state taking them back? Because they can?
I have a reason.
Well, and are they going to pay for them? That's the question.
No, no, we'll go to the consumer and we'll be hearing about it actually.
Is it law or is it just agency-driven?
It's agency-driven. I see, yeah, Moedoc is the first county, he's getting it right now. They're not an honor to do it, so. We'll keep you abreast where that goes. In closing, off of this subject, I just want to say, planning department, Hayley Lee's doing a fabulous job there. James Feld is doing awesome for us, both supporting planning and code enforcement and there together a little thing that he has his brilliant mind. Very sound planning division out there. From my perspective, the worst been for the last 30 years is the healthiest that it has been. Building apartments, you know, Sean Gilman, his team, Sean, he's got the set in the plan checking. You know, we still have, as always, a green improvement, very solid there with the building. Environmental health needs to be sorted out. Have difficulty hitting our special requirements with the addition of fires, cannabis, all the other unfunded mandates that keep piling on to that division. And need to have that sorted out, frankly. If I had one wish, and I know we've been working on this hard, is to somehow get some support, county council, halftime position within code enforcement. Historically, and this is prior to the cannabis, right? We have difficulty with camping primarily and egregious sites where we go out and enforcement, we have our process citations and get to note, get to a hand where we're not even cooperating. And we need to have followed through with civil action. It hasn't happened historically. Something I think that for your community development department and code enforcement would be a good investment for you to have in place. With that, I will thank you very much. All in all, grateful for this year. It's been a disaster, but we still have Sean Burstein, we still have Andrew Burstein. We're all basically healthy. Life gets crazy as we get older ages, our parents start going sideways, they have all kinds of things to deal with there that detracts from our day-to-day work. All in all, I'm just very pleased and grateful, privileged to have your team, community development, and staff, I do the same. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
No questions?
I just wanted to make a comment. I work with your department, your staff, more than any in the county. And the citizens get more than their money's worth out of your department. You're always responsive, your staff are responsive, they're always timely getting back to me. I know you take a lot of flack from the public because it affects people's personal lives, but truly professionalism in your department is admirable. Thank you.
Thank you.
And I would reiterate that and say that every time that I call, I get nothing but a quick response, or as quick as you can. And that's directed at Hayley. And you actually care. You really, really care about your community and the work that you put in and your family slash team really genuinely cares about the work you do and the community you live in. And I really appreciate that, and I think your community does too. So thank you for what you do. Moving on. AB, County Administration Discussion and Possible Directions Regarding Specific Level of County Assistance to Incorporated and Unincorporated Jurisdictions with regard to warming and or cooling shelters in various areas of the county.
Good morning, Chair Ogrin, Angela Davis, County Administrator. As we are all very much aware, Siskiyou County has weather events throughout the year. And with those weather events, there may be a request from incorporated cities from the county to assist with establishing, implementing warming or cooling centers. And so when it comes to the unincorporated areas, as we know, that is our sole responsibility. And if we were to receive a request, up until this point, we have not received one request for the unincorporated areas. But if we were, we would then, of course, handle that accordingly. So today I am seeking the board's direction specifically for those requests that may come forth from an incorporated city requesting the county to assist. And that could include anything from a location, to staffing, to supplies, to building up, to tearing down. It's just a variety of tasks that may be needed. And I just would like to have clarity for both those that are requesting and then for county staff so that we understand exactly what the pleasure of the board is when it comes to warming and cooling centers with the incorporated cities. Also today, I do have Trish Barbieri, who is the Director of Social Services, Susan Servelli, who is the Deputy Director of Social Services, Brian Shinoney, who's the Director of Emergency Services, and Sarah Kullard, who is the Director of Health and Human Services, that are here available there, the boots on the ground, literally, specifically Mr. Servelli. So if there are any specific questions that you have, I'm sure that they will be able to assist if I'm unable to do so. So with that, I turn it over to the board for any questions, comments, and as I stated, I'm just seeking direction from the board so that we can have clarity moving forward. Any questions from the board?
So I get the unincorporated part.
Correct.
But give me, I guess, a backdrop of what we've done for the cities in the past. Isn't there kind of a protocol? It isn't like you call up and just say, we need help at the city of Mount Shasta. How does it work?
Well, currently, we have an informal process. So, and that's, if the board chooses to assist the incorporated cities, then we would then implement, I would come back to the board with an actual formal plan that would establish those boundaries and those roles and responsibilities. Currently, if a city has a request, the internal process is to actually reach out to our Director of Emergency Services, Brian Shinoney, who then reviews the weather, to determine whether or not the benchmarks are being met, because there are certain benchmarks that have been, again, it's informal. And so if those benchmarks are met, then that is then approved at that level, and then the discussions occur about what level of assistance. City may need a location, or they may need staff, they may need supplies, or like I said, the breaking number, the shutting down of the warming or cooling center. So it's all over the map. And so, again, it's pretty muddy. And that's where I'm seeking clarity because of the vast array of services that we have provided in the past. For a typical four-day shelter, it ran approximately $11,000, and I'm not trying to put a number on it, but just so for you to understand what services may be required.
And are there services for residents?
It is posted throughout the county that a warming shelter or a cooling shelter will be opened. I probably would seek assistance from Susan Servelli to determine the screening of those that come into the centers. From what I understand, it can be anybody that shows up during those times that have been noticed. But I'll have her verify that.
Good morning, Susan Servelli, Deputy Director for Social Services and Shelter Coordinator for Human Services. When we post warming center, or the cities that request a warming center or cooling center post, it is open to the community, any person that is in need, in the sense of the warming centers. The majority of our population that comes in could be classified as our homeless population who seek those warming centers. But it also depends on power situations in the local areas. If we have an area without power, we've often had residents that come in because they do not have secondary or wood resources for their house. And for the cooling centers, it tends to be a general population when we've had to operate those. We're much fewer that we operate, usually the county libraries and other facilities take on those daytime duties because they're already open. But we do see more of a senior population that perhaps don't have air conditioning or just trying to get around town and need a cooling spot to stop in in those situations.
So for instance, we don't go into, you know, the city of Mount Shasta or the city of Wade and just say, we're setting up a warming or cooling center for you?
No.
It would require the cities coming to, oh yes, I would imagine.
Correct. The informal process currently is that we would receive a direct request from the city itself, a representative from the city, preferably the city manager, whomever may be in charge at that time. And that request would go to, directly to Mr. Shinoney, who would then establish the weather system that we are experiencing to determine if the benchmarks are being met.
Thank you, correct.
I have a question. So looking at the past, I would say that none of the government buildings that have been utilized in the past are proper for this. They've required technically, I would say, ASMAT cleanup afterwards, very inconvenient, there's potential access to health records. Something that I've been looking at is, you know, I want solutions to this stuff. I'm looking long-term. I know I spoke with city of Warrica, looks like they have a church on board for temporary. But currently, you know, one thing I'm looking at is with the Senate Bill One, the mental health bill that was passed, there's a $6.4 billion bond posted for infrastructure. You know, while I'd like to see a mental health and rehabilitation center, would this infrastructure bond be a possibility for developing some sort of mobile warming shelter as part of that system? Or that way, we're not coming out of pocket on it, but we're defeating an issue that this was designed for.
Correct. And we did have, at least I am aware of, one warming center that was located at a county building. And you're correct, there was some cleanup that was involved after post-center closure. With regards to SB One, we can definitely look into what the viability is for a mobile warming and cooling center within the unincorporated areas, because then we would have to, of course, and you know this, that we would have to work in conjunction with the cities to determine their needs or determine their desire to have us entering into the cities to hold a warming or cooling center that is mobile. So we can definitely take a look at that and research those, that piece of that, for sure.
Mr. Servelli, I would request that you come up and address the county specifications about having that in the county building, because we've already addressed that before, as far as housing people after hours and youth, et cetera.
There's a lot of different barriers also deferred to Ms. Rivera, if she'd like to add anything, or Sarah Kullard. For human services, some of the barriers to using our buildings is that our buildings are ready of 24/7 facility for adult and child protective services. We are 24 hours on call and any time that we take a youth into care or an adult into some type of protective services, we may need to utilize our office for temporary location and assessment interviews and other things. Therefore, if we had multiple public persons and community members in seeking at some type of warming or cooling center, there could be severe safety risks and confidentiality issues that come with that. The other issue is that obviously we run, we are in the business usually eight to five. Right now, our mobile crisis is utilizing the campus drive unit 24 hours a day, and so there's a problem utilizing that building during business hours. So in the instance, when we did have the warming center, I believe it was New Year's Eve two years ago, in 2060 campus drive building, it was very difficult to get everyone out in the morning to, but we had a lot of confidentiality issues in our small lobby area with our visitation program that comes in for child protective services, as well as our behavioral health clients that are coming upstairs for med services and other services immediately late at 8:00 AM. So it really creates just a transitional issue specifically during the week, but also 24 hours a day for safety and protection.
While we're talking about this, I would also like to address the multiple conversations we've had at the C O C meetings, specifically the last meeting regarding alternative conversations about warming shelters, whether they were mobile, static type, but at least we were in conversation about trying to figure out other alternatives for this. We did discuss a mobile option. We did discuss a more static option, whether it be a transitional type of a structure. So you might maybe address that as well.
Do I commend the C O C, specifically the city of Warrica and Chief Gilman, for his inspirational thinking, thinking outside the box, literally, contemplating bringing in some kind of mobile trailer that could be utilized and brought into the areas which would increase access for those in our homeless and unhoused areas and populations within his jurisdiction. He was talking about some type of trailering situation, 18-wheeler with heating situations, those type of things. Obviously, there's liability, insurance, heating, all those things to think about. But it did take away the burden of finding a location, somebody's building, those type of things. He was also thinking about sanitation of that facility would be easier and those, just those logistics that come with it. So there's a heated, long discussion at C O C meeting this last month, and I think it was productive. It got everyone thinking that there doesn't have to be a building or a county building or a church that steps forward, obviously. Those are kind of the easy solutions if we knew we had so-and-so church available every time we could call. But for example, when we use the Methodist Church, they generously opened their doors numerous occasions for us on warming centers. And a lot of our population couldn't get there. They don't have the transportation. It was in a snowstorm. People weren't going to even come out of their houses during those snowstorms or off the streets. They would not leave their belongings if they're part of the unhoused population to get across town. We did arrange some transportation, but it limited the number of people that could utilize it. So we had some type of unit that could go out and assist the community or even travel throughout the night to provide periodic warming, a couple hours at a time type of situation, because these are not shelters, they are warming centers. They're meant to be temporary, they're not necessarily meant to be sleeping situations. It would perhaps help, so the city was very, a large advocate in that during those last conversations.
Thank you. David's quick.
I understand the county's responsibility in the unincorporated areas, but can someone educate me on the state law regarding incorporated cities and their responsibility for this?
Why are we backing up? That is actually a fantastic question, so. And we have Trish Barbieri, the Director of Social Services, that may be able to answer that direct question.
I'm hoping so. I'm just returning after a three-week vacation, so please bear with me here if I seem a little bit scattered. But as you are all aware, we are all disaster service workers, county employees as well as city employees and other jurisdictions. And as a courtesy to the county, H H S A, primarily behavioral health and social services, have assisted with the operation, implementation operation, maintaining, as Ms. Davis described, with the cooling centers. And I'll just clarify, we don't call them, as Mr. Vali mentioned, we don't call them shelters. Shelters are active full scope. We are mandated by statute, we, the social services, to respond to declared disasters, but not centers. There's a difference. And so, that's why I mentioned that it's really been a courtesy. We have never invoiced the city or the county, I will just say, for any sort of time or service that's been provided. It is my opinion that the services that are provided at the cooling centers are not specialized services. There's no specialty to them. Oftentimes, you know, we hear, "Oh, social services, they do the emergency shelters." We do. And there's a specialty to that. And we do it in collaboration and conjunction with the American Red Cross. But when operating cooling centers or warming centers, there's no specialty to that whatsoever. Mr. Valley mentioned, there's no overnight, or, you know, we don't, we don't put out any beds or things of that sort. We often will issue blankets, and we've had food donated and things of that sort. And the only way that we are able to fund it is to actually track the time that the employees spend there and charge it to our public assistance programs. And so, we have our staff actually taking brochures and pamphlets and boards of different sorts to promote the programs that we administer, because that's what we're mandated to do. That is the service that we're mandated to provide. We don't have any sort of discretion in terms of utilizing or realignment funds any differently and outside of the scope of the programs that we administer. And so, tying it to that work is really critical for it to be paid. As we all know, there are, I'm not aware of any center or any adverse weather event where we've operated a cooling center or a warming center where a disaster has been proclaimed. And so, there's no opportunity for us to recoup our funding any other way unless we just treat it like a normal workday, which, as Mr. Valley mentioned, is very complex because we're already operating business, normal business, between 7:00 a.m. and 6:00 p.m. And we have two 24-hour emergency response units set up for mandated services, for child protective services, adult protective services, and also family urgent response systems, the first system that we're mandated to operate. I won't, I will just say that it's a challenge oftentimes. It is a challenge, not only for all the reasons that I've mentioned, but also because of staffing issues. We seek volunteers, and we don't always get volunteers. You're asking staff who have already worked maybe a 10-hour day, a day or 10-hour day to work a shift from, what are the shift season date, typically 7:00 p.m. to midnight and midnight to 7:00 a.m. And then they have the responsibility to go back for the next day to do their regular job. So, it is, is a challenge, for sure. It is a challenge.
So, I understand your role. I'm still trying to sort out the city's role. It's important to me to know, before I would ever commit a position on county personnel or financial commitment to something like this, I want to know, if I'm going to jump into somebody else's pool, I want to know what pool I'm jumping into. Basically, I don't think I do know that at this point. The other thing, from my perspective, is that I've never had a request personally or been reached out to by either one of the incorporated cities in my district for such a shelter. I know Mr. Shinoni and I have been working on some evacuation shelters for emergencies regarding natural disasters and that kind of thing, trying to use the grainage and those kind of thing, and feeling in general that we don't want a warming shelter here. We might do an emergency evacuation, but not a warming shelter. I am interested in what kind of services are articulated between the county and maybe the Food Drive and Happy Camp. They have a wellness center down there, and I do know they do meals and maybe warming shelter things and that kind of thing, but a different situation down there. It's also a county responsibility, because it's not an incorporated city. So, maybe we can talk, turn about that, that relationship down there as well.
And I can also review the individual city's responsibilities. I know that, as mentioned, the City of Wairega have been having conversations with regards to their roles and responsibilities for the warming and cooling centers. And so, I'm not aware of a state mandate unless Director.
Well, she wouldn't do it healthy, because I.
But that's, that's something.
Governments are always looking for mine, from somebody else. And before the county would fulfill that, I certainly want to know where those boundaries are.
Good morning, Worship Prayers, Branch Room, Director of Emergency Services. So, the answer to that question is basically its capabilities and what is overwhelmed. So, standardized emergency management states that if a jurisdiction is overwhelmed or the resources have been burdened, then the next resource steps in, which would be the county. So, one of the things that we have seen as throughout Siskiyou County is that when a warming shelter or a cooling shelter, and to be, to be clear on that, the cooling shelters, we have had cooling shelters, and we have them during fires due to power safety shut-offs or due to, in the case of the mill fire, we had a long-running cooling shelter, but that was in conjunction with the agency, which at that point was Pacific Power, so that they funded that. And then we funded our side of it through California Disaster Assistance Act, through the mill fire and one of our vendors. Cooling shelters are usually through the day. We only are through the hottest part of the day, and most, all of our jurisdictions have either libraries that the county uses or set up a few of the churches that have already been used at. Warming shelters tend to be a little bit different in the sense that, or warming centers, they tend to be a little bit different in the sense that they're going to be overnight, and we are going to have to find the location that best suits the area. But again, it's based off of the jurisdiction's ability to either fund it themselves or to have the personnel to do it. And what it's, has come to us, we can't walk in and just like, and then we've talked about this with local jurisdiction as well, I can't walk in during a disaster and say, "Hey, we're in charge now," unless it's, unless it's requested by the local jurisdiction. So, any of our incorporated cities, including our C S D, cannot walk in and say, "Hey, Kenny's here, we're going to help now," until I've been requested to do so. And that is where, I think, that question that you asked, that, so, we're being asked with a, there's a step being kind of skipped on that, with that local jurisdiction just coming straight to the county. So, pending questions.
What's thresholds?
So, threshold is based off of, we are actually, we have very low threshold compared to a lot of the state of California and some of the other. For cooling, it's got to be two to three days of wet and cold, so wind chill, it's a matrix that we use. And cold is one thing, but it's got to be multiple cold for multiple days and multiple nights. With the inability to get warm, the biggest trigger is going to be wet and cold and wind chill. Freezing, freezing, quick, quick to hypothermia. And then warm is multiple days without or pre-morning into evening into daytime, high temperatures.
I guess I should have clarified that. Was there a threshold on number of participants?
On how many folks are busy?
You said a jurisdiction has to be overwhelmed. To me, overwhelmed means it's beyond your capacity.
Correct. And in my tenure here, going on four years, we have only had one other county or one other city request a warming center, and then quickly decided that they were just going to use a local church instead. Thank you.
Yeah, in my mind, it's not an either-or thing. I think this is where you have to look at partnering. We're the ones, county provides mental health services, social services, cities don't. Talking about staff, and cities are not staffed to do anything more than the basics, like your water, sewer, you know, and admin type things. And so, it's, it's me willing partners that want to partner with the city and how do we develop a plan moving forward? What's the criteria? How is that set up? I personally don't think county buildings are set up to be the D centers. I think you need to address that location. For some reason, it comes to mind, and I'm just using Wairega as the example, because I've not had an experience in my communities does where the city does where they need that. I mean, you know, again, no boundaries. Our citizens, our citizens, a dozen of them, that's including the county, safety in our chassis, including the county, they say they live in a zip code or whatever. But why not partner with the parents? We probably didn't have money, we bought that armory, why don't we set up a, this is where if we have to do something, let's get people on board. And there is grant money out there through the state for homelessness and/or other things. And remember, they, you know, they close the highway, so I'm not worried about snow and these kind of things. We're talking about certain instances, cooling things. I mean, that's a perfect location to have a cooling center. Why does it always have to be a county or a city? Let's get the community involved on that type of thing.
We've tried that.
Well, then, here, well, here's the other point, you know, cities are not staffed. We are well-staffed to do this kind of thing. And I don't want to say we need to do the minimum, we just do the best we can with what we got. And that may be, we can't do at some point in time.
And so, there has been moments where we just, the staffing is just not there. We may have the building, but we just do not have the staffing. I know myself, I know most directors have stepped in on those positions, but it's, it's got to be a buy-in from both.
And I think that's where we need to partner, it can't be an either-or type of situation. And I try to find volunteers, we have a leisure population, and we don't have a lot of people that are willing, and I'm not willing to have our employees work a shift, volunteer, and they come back, try to do a shift. That's not productive, that's not, that's not helping the cause. Anyways, those are some thoughts on that. Fun thing.
So, when you talk about wet days, hot days, whatever, but is the power out? Because residents, most residents have power for heating or wood or gas or something or cooling, they have some form of cooling. So, are you talking about when those systems are down, that that's a trigger as well or not?
That's only been a trigger one, one time in my tenure, is Ben McLeod was out, and McLeod, they opened a warming center, which was one of the hotels. And for the most part, our house population is fairly well-equipped, wood stove heaters, and they have that ability to continue themselves and be warm. It's the unhoused population that's going to be the most vulnerable.
So, we're, I mean, I guess let's cut to the chase. We're talking about the homeless population. We're not talking about residents, for the most part.
Yes, and for, in my experience, there has not been everyone else as the community that's open to this kind of shelters.
Thank you. Mr. Harris?
No.
Okay. So, I think the goal, in my perspective, is not just catering to the homeless population, but to eliminate a crisis, panic situation of trying to create a shelter, no matter whether it's warming, cooling, but to just have a plan in place, or whether it's warming, cooling, fire, evacuation, whatever, so that when we have to have something in place, we have a plan. Don't we already have that?
We have a sheltering plan, that's down here with emergency.
We have, but have a sheltering plan, but it's, when we're talking about the warming and cooling centers, we don't have a formal adopted plan. And that is the goal of this discussion. So, what I'm gathering, please correct me if I'm wrong, is that the board has a common thread of preference of not utilizing county buildings for a center, for warming or cooling centers, and formalizing some form of a plan for our role and responsibility, which that would be brought back to the board, but that's what we're seeking, is that kind of direction. So, which helps us greatly. And it would be a situation where the plan would come back to the board for formal adoption, which would stimulate the process. Step one, city must contact county's O E S to determine if the weather event meets the criteria necessary to move forward. And then you just kind of go down that list. Recently, we had a situation where we were looking at a warming center, however, all of our staff was snowbound, so we couldn't assist with staffing. And so, there's always that potential of, we may have the best intentions, but it may just not be a viable option because we don't have the staff. And that's typically what they're looking for, is the staff to assist, so. But that's where I'm here. So, unless I'm wrong, I mean, we can definitely bring back, again, that plan. Director of O E S has created that plan, but bringing it back to the board for adoption to make sure that everybody understands what to do in that situation.
And what the county is willing to supply.
Or can supply.
Or can supply.
Quickly, so that plan has been written, and it's never been adopted by any of the jurisdictions, and that, we pushed it to the jurisdiction to adopt adoption.
Well, that's the answer right there.
No. No, I'm saying it has to come to the board first.
Right, that's what I'm saying. The plan has been.
Adopted and then, then pushed back.
Depending on the board's wishes.
Yeah, because then what happens is that the board will adopt the plan, we would then send that out to the jurisdiction saying, "This is our process. If you have a weather event, that you are seeking a warming or cooling center, this is the process. If you require, if you're over capacity, this is the process that would require you to pull that trigger for potential assistance from the county." Or not. So, that's why I'm seeking, or not. I don't know.
One of the things I don't, I don't want to lose track of is the logistics of pulling this off.
Yes.
When Scott Valley needs a warming shelter, you probably can't get there.
Uh-huh.
Or when Happy Camp has an ice storm, you can't get there. So, committing employees from the county offices here that have already worked for six hours is just not reasonable.
I agree, I 100% agree. And hearing from those that work the shelters and the post-care, it's extreme. So, yes, I, my focus is the employees, to watch for their welfare and their wellbeing.
Yeah, and if it's physically impossible to get there, it's often very hazardous.
Correct. And it's, it's, there, I believe that because the county has stepped up when asked, there may be a level of expectation that the county will always be able to provide staff. And that's where it gets muddy for me, and that's where I want to be able to have a clearly defined role of responsibility of what shall be done and what may be provided, the two contrasting, if that is the desire and pleasure of the board.
I'm okay with something along that nature, but I think that the jurisdictions would have to buy into it as well. If they do not buy into it, for instance, then it's.
Then they would not utilize their plan.
Right, you know, is all I can say.
Right, then they would not utilize the plan.
You know, because I, you know, we're, how do I say, there's enough going on with, you know, is it, is there skin in the game from the cities as well when we provide these? Or is it, are we on our own?
Go ahead, Trish.
We've been pretty much on our own. There have been some centers where I believe city council staff has volunteered.
The one instance I can think of, I think, was one of the buyers, Bold Support Mill, probably the mill that City of Wade has for a cooling center, but they opened up their community center. They helped, you know, and I think all we provided was the generator potentially, I think, to keep that going. But short of that, I mean, both shoulders were at the wheel, but if it's just the county by itself, you know, that's problematic.
If I may, do, Sharon, I think that's where my thought is, they have to be a willing partner. It can't be an either-or thing.
No.
And it has to be, what we can, what we're capable of taking, and they have to be honest on that plan. Now, resources could be, I don't know, the generator, the food, the water, whatever, and I don't think we are ever going to have dedicated staff that will say, "Okay, we're just going to ship in a dozen people." That's never going to happen. So.
It can't.
It's, it's got to be defined in what we are going to do, what we, what we can partly take the water, and clearly you can find it.
If, I mean, one of the limiting factors that we have seen across, it's been police pressures. presence. So, we do, in honor, in the ability to keep everyone safe, including our employees, the members of the community, having police presence is always, is a mandatory. At first, we did use the sheriff, and though we have that, we have that buy-in, and then the jurisdictions have used police. But one of the concerns, that is the overtime, and having just somebody, you're literally just sitting eight to 10 hours. That's always been a challenge, because that is a high cost. So, and if that is, the last one that we had, we couldn't get a police presence, so we called, because I'm not willing to put people in jeopardy at that point.
And that is a public--
Safety.
It is a public safety issue, as well as our own employee safety issue.
So, yes, I'm glad you brought that, because that was something I was just getting ready to say. So, isn't that the whole purpose of funding a homeless liaison officer? Like, this specific instance would be perfect for that, because they're already a law enforcement official, or retired. And, I mean, this capacity is what that's for, right? To accommodate the homeless. And we're already funding that.
True.
True. So, I mean, it doesn't make sense to send, you know, social services staff and stuff in there, when we're already funding two city positions that should technically be lined up perfectly for this particular instance.
And that's a very valid point, to where that may be stimulated within the plan, that, you know, police presence that is supplied by or administered by the requesting city. And if not, then the county is not able to assist. So, that's definitely something we can stimulate.
Yeah, that would be, that would be one of the limiting factors is law enforcement.
Do note it.
Okay. So, what's the--
Well, I believe, if I can just recap and state the takeaways, is that we will go, staff will go back to the table and review the plan, and have it massaged to include very clear directives as the process, the steps, the requirements, not only from the county, but for the requesting city, and then bring that back to the board for review and for adoption. If that is sufficient for the board, then that is the direction that we will head.
No invids?
Not invids?
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you so much for your time.
Don't spend any ears on it, though.
Oh, no, no, no. But thank you very much for your time.
Wendy, do you need a quick break before--
Yes, I'd love a break.
Okay. Short break. 10 minutes, 5 minutes, 10 minutes?
You're the chair. Take it now.
There we go. No. We'll meet back at 10:45.